Good afternoon, everyone. We are opening the public hearing right now for Skanel and Amazon. It is March 3rd at 3:06 PM. We're opening this public hearing. Before we start with any of the rules or get started with comments, I'd like to ask you all to stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. Pledge of allegiance to the flag. And just last rule of business, if you would like to make public comment, we just ask that you fill out, put your name on the sign up sheet. We're going to do it in order, alright? Just I'd like to talk about just the ground rules, very simple. This is a public hearing for the Amazon. It's more popular known as the Amazon Project for their distribution center here in Wayau'au'anda. It is not a back and forth. We do have the applicants on, but they're from outside the area. So they are on via Zoom, but they are here and they're here to fill you in on the project, on the kind of particulars of the project. Again, it's not a back and forth. So it's not like you'll ask a question and I'll ask them for an answer. However, if in your comments, you do, there's something you think should be clarified, whatever it might be, include that in your comments. I'm going to write it down. At the end of all of the comments, there may be some that I want to ask the applicant and ask them to respond to. There's no requirement for any of that, but we want to do that. But again, I'll take them all together to discourage the back and forth. And then when everyone's done giving their comments, we will make sure that they will ask some questions we think are pertinent and they'll respond to that. I'm just going to also tell you who is present. My name is Bill Fieravanti. I'm the CEO over at the Orange County IDA. I have Kelly Riley here, she's our project manager. Francis Roth is our stenographer. We also have in attendance our town supervisor Denise Quinn. Thank you for being here. On via Zoom again is the applicant with a co-application between Amazon, who will be the tenant, and Skanel, who's the industrial developer. They'll build this building. They're responsible for all the construction labor in that regard. So who's joining us remotely is from Amazon Glendalyn Thames and Jonathan Greeley. We also have representing Skanel, again, the developer who will be building the building, Mr. Matthew Boone. In representing the applicant, their legal counsel is Robert McLaughlin. And I think that's everyone we have that is joining us from the applicant. Next, I'm going to read the resolution. Just I'll tell you what's happened so far. The applicant came, submitted an application to the IDA. It was reviewed by, of course, our staff, our board of directors, as well as our consultants, including an attorney we have, our general counsel. That was, they presented and the board of directors passed an initial resolution to authorize the public hearing. That's the only vote they've taken, just to say yes. We think this should go on far enough that we get to a public hearing. After you make all your comments, Ms. Roth will trans, what's the word I want to use? Transcribe them into a transcription, a transcript of the proceedings. Every board member of the Orange County IDA will receive that, will review that, will read that transcript, as well as of course, the application, other supporting information. And then at some point, we're not exactly sure when it will be, but the board would vote on a final approval for the incentives that they've requested. So that's some of the basics. Next, I'm going to read the resolution that authorizes this public hearing. And it has all the particulars about this application in it. And then we'll get to the public comment. This is a lot of legalese, so I just apologize in advance. Notice the public hearing. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing pursuant to Article 18A of the New York General Municipal Law will be held by the Orange County Industrial Development Agency, known as the Agency, on March 3rd, 2023 at 3:00 PM local time at the Wayau'au'anda Town Hall, 80 Ridgeberry Road, Plaid Hill, New York, 10973, in connection with the following matter. Skanel Properties Number 600 LLC, that's the incorporated name of one of the co-applicants, and Amazon.com Services LLC, the other incorporated name of the tenant, the co-applicant. Each a Delaware Limited Liability Company, each for itself or on behalf of an entity to be formed, collectively known as the company, requested the agency undertake a project, known as the project, consisting of A1, the acquisition of a leasehold interest in an aggregate property, approximately 100 acres of land, located at 22 McBride Road, tax map number 15-1-63.21, Hoops Road, tax map number 11-1-34.34, and portions of the following, 3079 Route 6, tax map 11-1-34.1, 3141 Route 6, map number 11-1-41, 3073071 Route 6, number 11-1-31.31, Hoops Road, map number 11-1-34.32, and Hoops Road, map number 11-1-34.33, all in Wayau'au'anda, New York, collectively known as the land. Two, the demolition of certain structures and of the construction of an approximately 925,000 square foot distribution plant center slash warehouse, including office space, specializing in distribution and delivery, site improvements, including stormwater controls, utility improvements, including but not limited to water, sewer, pump station, electric, gas, car parking spaces, trailer truck storage spaces, loading docks, dark sky compliant lighting, sound barrier walls and landscaping, collectively known as the facility. Three, the acquisition and installation in and on the facility of furniture, fixtures and equipment, collectively known as the equipment, and together with the land and the facility, the project facility. B, the granting of certain financial assistance in the form of exemptions from state and local sales and use tax and mortgage recording tax, collectively the financial assistance. C, the appointment of the company or its designated as an agent of the agency in connection with the acquisition, construction, equipping and completion of the project facility. And D, the acquisition of an interest in the land and facility by the agency pursuant to a lease agreement and the acquisition of an interest in the equipment pursuant to a bail of sale from the company to the agency and the sublease of the project facility back to the company pursuant to a leaseback agreement. Is that clear? The company will be the initial owner or operator of the project. The agency will, at the above stated time, hear all persons with views with respect to the proposed financial assistance to the company, the proposed owner slash operator, the location of the project facility and the nature of the project. A copy of the application filed by the company with the agency with respect to the project, including an analysis of the cost and benefits of the project, are available for public inspection during the business hours at the office of the agency located at 4 Crotty Lane, Number 100, New Windsor, New York, 12553, or on its website at www.ocnyd.com. I do want to make that clear to people that everything is on our website. Any project we're even considering, one that was approved years ago, but it's still receiving some sort of, let's say, taxes and a benefit, all that information is on our website. You go on the main page, again, OC, it's Orange County, New York, IDA, ocnyd.com. It's a clear menu. Under active projects, you'll see all of our active projects. You can click on each one. You can see their application to the IDA. You can see any resolution we've passed. You can see our cost benefit analysis. And again, for past projects, you can see information related to the ones that are already happening. So the last thing I do want to share is our cost benefit analysis for the project. And then we'll get into our, we'll have the applicant explain the project basics. But we do an analysis using a tool that we purchased from a firm that specializes in this. They work with IDAs all around New York State. It's a trusted tool. We input all the various data about the project, how many jobs it's going to create, construction jobs permanent, various factors, what are the incentives that we're going to be giving, what are the considering giving, what are, what's the value of that? And then the tool really does an analysis that determines what is the cost of these benefits to the public? What are we giving up potentially in unrealized tax revenue? And what are the benefits that we're getting economically, dollar amount, in return? And we end up doing a ratio of what is the benefit to cost ratio? So basically, let's say we're talking about, we're looking at basically, cost of the incentives locally are $3,877,000. That's between exempting them on sales tax, the 8.125% sales tax in Orange County, on their building materials, furniture, fixtures, equipment, any of that, and saving the sales tax on that. And then we save them, again, if approved, on the mortgage recording tax. That's a 1.05% of the principal on a commercial mortgage. All companies get charged that, we can exempt that as well. Those are the only two benefits that they're requesting. So the cost of, the value of those is, again, locally to us, 3.877 million. To the state, because they lose a share of sales tax as well, it's a cost of 4.759 million. Locally, the benefits are $165,000,221,429. So over 165 million. And understand, that's in job creation. That's in what the tool estimates, how much of each employee is, what they earn, how much is spent locally? What else does the company do? Of course, construction labor and all of the other subcontractors and such, you get work from that, the impact of that. And then all of the ancillary benefits, let's say plowing and lawn maintenance, they're going to need that as well. That's all factored in. So the estimated benefits of the project, again, are 165 million at a cost of 3.88 million. That is a benefit to cost ratio of 43 to 1. So we estimate that 40, that the value, the benefits economically to the local and to the county economy are 43 times the cost or value of the benefit. Just want to share that with you. That is available on the website, again, under active projects, under skanel/Amazon. You'll find all those. If you or anyone watching at home, if you're not able to find that, or you're not seeing enough information, you have other questions, you want to ask the question in between the lines, contact our office anytime. I know a lot of you, if you know that, you know, we communicate very openly. Our main number is 845-234-4192. Or you can find each of us on the website. You can email me, whatever it takes. We want to make sure you have the information. Our goal is to be transparent to the utmost. That is our intention. And if you find it otherwise, I'd like to hear that, please. Okay, without further ado, I'd like to allow our applicant to present, again, just the basics, perhaps, I guess, just the basics beyond what was in the resolution, so you'll understand the nature of the project. Is Matt Boone, or is Matt going to present?
Yeah, Bill.
Perfect, Matt. And you can share your screen. You should be set to share your screen at any, at any time, please.
Alright. You see my screen?
Go ahead.
Very good. Hello, my name's Matt Boone. I'm a developer with Skanel Properties. Skanel Properties is a privately held real estate development investment company headquartered in Indianapolis, Indiana.
We're having trouble, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we're having trouble here. Can you try that again? I'll put you right, stenographer as well.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Matt.
So my name is-
Nice and slowly, I like the challenge, but you be one of the easy ones, please.
Alright. So again, my name is Matt Boone. I'm a developer with Skanel Properties. Skanel Properties is a privately held real estate development investment company headquartered in Indianapolis, Indiana. We're mainly involved in industrial and multifamily development throughout the country. And we are here for the proposed industrial development consisting of a Class A 925,000 square foot industrial building with associated site improvements and water sewer main extensions.
Matt, we're just, we're having a lot of trouble hearing you for some reason. I've got you just on, what's that?
Would it be better if I-
I don't have these on. The problem, if I put her next to him, next to Fran, you can hear him, but I worry the public can't hear well enough. Thank you. I worry that too.
Is it volume issue or just?
It's both, you're cutting out a little bit too. We're going to try the microphones. I'm going to try and feed you right into the mic here. Matt, can you state your name?
Matt Boone.
Okay, let's give that a shot. Go ahead, Matt, apologies.
Alright, so the site in question, south of I-84, north of State Road 6, and just east of McBride Road. So the development of this project requires numerous extraordinary costs associated with it compared to a typical greenfield site. So first, this is an existing gravel sand mine. The development of this site requires the closure of this mine through New York State D.C. Second, the site requires improvements to the state DOT roadways to improve existing cultural roadway network from our drive all the way to I-84. This includes improvements to the pro, to the proposed drive intersection, adding turn lanes, installation of two new traffic signals, and improvements to the intersection of State Road 6 and 17M, as well as improvements to the westbound I-84 off ramp onto northbound 17M. Lastly, the site does not have public water or sewer availability. So the project proposes to extend public water and sewer front to I-84. These extensions will also provide future development within the town to connect to these facilities. So this is all we have for the actual building itself. So I will turn it over to our tenant to speak on the economic benefits from the business operation.
Thanks, Matt. Glendalyn Thames, please, thank you.
Good afternoon, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Awesome. Good afternoon, thank you so much for the opportunity to come before you. My name is Glendalyn Thames and I am on Amazon's Economic Development Public Policy Team and I lead our expansion efforts in the state of New York. We are pleased to be here before you today, proposing a warehouse distribution facility that would ideally take care of heavy bulk items. With this proposed site in partnership with our development partner, Skanel, we are proposing approximately 150 full-time positions. And as part of those 150 jobs, about 90% would be hourly associates and then 10% would be managerial positions. We have an average starting wage of $19 an hour. Our base is $15 an hour. And so with these proposed wages, they would be somewhere in between 15 and $19 an hour or more, depending on the market when we actually plan to launch here. In addition to the full-time positions that we are proposing, there will be an additional hundreds of jobs from our delivery service partners and third-party providers. We really pride ourselves on the jobs that we are bringing to communities because we really meet people where they're at. And so what does that mean? That means you need a job while you're in transition. So you may have been laid off for a job and you're still trying to figure out, okay, what's your next move? Amazon has a job for you. Or you trying to supplement income with a second or third job? Amazon has a job for you. Or are you in the beginning of your career and still trying to figure out what you want to do? Amazon has a job for you. And if you are that 18 to 21-year-old who may have taken a couple of classes at, you know, community college, Amazon has a job for you. And we offer a huge benefit in our career choice. This is a part of Amazon's Upskill pledge, where we have pledged to upscale 300,000 of our hourly associates across the US by 2025. And so as part of this benefit, we provide prepaid 100% tuition, books and fees for our associates to take advantage of upscaling, whether that's foundational skills, GED, ESL classes, or associate's bachelor's degree. And again, we are agnostic to whether you grow with us and provide upward mobility within Amazon, or you use those opportunities to find private, other private and public sector positions. We want to invest in you and your career trajectory through our Career Choice Partnership. And so one of the key partnerships from an educational perspective that we have in the Hudson Valley and specifically Orange County is through the Orange County Community College that we launched that partnership last year. And so anticipating this facility coming online, these associates would have direct access to classes that the Orange County Community College offers. In addition to the Career Choice benefit, we offer day one benefits of comprehensive health, medical, dental, 401K match shaving for your future. And those are the same benefits that are extended to me as an corporate employee, that are extended to our hourly associates there. So again, we are providing comprehensive benefits and educational benefits in investing in our people. So we're really proud about the proposed opportunity and jobs that we're bringing to this community. Thank you. I will stop there and look forward to hearing any remarks and comments from the public. Bill, you're on mute if you're talking.
We received one email, comment via email, from Alisa Vanderback, and I'll read it. Hi, my name is Alisa Vanderback. I'm a resident of Orange County, New York. I'm writing because I want to state my opposition to Amazon and Skanel receiving any tax rate or any tax incentive. Taxpayer, I don't want my money to subsidize corporate welfare or to help a multi-billion dollar company like Amazon. That money can be used to attract better jobs and build better infrastructure in Orange County. Thank you, Alisa. Alisa Vanderback. Kelly, that was the only communication we had in advance, okay? We're going to open up, I don't have that list though, sorry. I don't think I can reach that, sorry, if you could help me. We'll open it up to the public comment now. I'm not going to put a time limit on it, but I will if it seems like it's becoming excessive, but we want you to speak. There's not 100 people here wanting to speak and we'll have your piece. Thank you so much. I'm going to start with Aldenato, is that, I'm sorry to persist?
Daniel.
Daniel, I apologize. Starting with Daniel Aldenato.
Yeah, so I heard you say like how the tool works, how it's a 43 to 1 ratio, right? But I don't see how the ratio comes into play, right? You have a facility that's coming here no matter what. So all the benefits that you see that you're going to receive, you're going to receive them regardless, whether you give Amazon this big tax break, right? Then I heard a lady from Amazon, I forgot her name, I apologize, right? And you talk about these great jobs that you're starting at 19, but let's talk about something, right? Minimum wage, we're trying to get to 15%. By the time we get to minimum wage, right, when we reach that cap, we're at 40% behind where we're supposed to be at, which is stuff that somebody ignored, right? You'll be, you'll be a part of the Orange County-
Daniel, if you just slow down a little bit, you need to get all the comment on the record. I got the same problem.
I got the same problem, that's right. So part of the Orange County, right, being the Orange County IDA and stuff like this, this is something that you guys are very familiar with, right? There was an article that came out of Orange County over 15 years ago, that said that as a family of four in Orange County, you needed to make $22 an hour, right? So now here comes Amazon, the biggest corporation in the country, and let's start on $3 below where they should have been 15 years ago. That's called regression, right? That's something that is not good for the community, right? And then it seems like every time that they build in Amazon, right, that wherever they build that, it's the guinea pig, because they haven't figured out the infrastructure. The gentleman said that they're going to be putting a sewage. Well, I'm glad that they figured out the sewage. You know why? Because when they built the Montgomery facility, they didn't figure out the sewage, which caused massive damage to 84. If you went down by Route 84, by exit 5, any kind of rain, you had a pond out there, not a river, a pond, right? So this is astronomical. Another number that nobody wants to know about this ratio, but let's talk about it, is that your turnover rate is about 20 to 1, right? So let's talk about that, that ratio on Amazon's turnover. The bottom line is this, Amazon comes to town. We're not going to stop it. But you can control whether you give them millions of dollars. Why about you give your residents the tax incentives and the tax breaks first? How come in Orlando, Florida and in Vegas, right, the casinos pay revenue, they give a break to the homeowners? And Orlando, Florida, they give a break to the homeowners for the revenue of business. When is Amazon going to start giving revenue back to the homeowners of the town? That's a serious issue. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Can I ask you, sir, can you state your, your address?
Yeah, my address is 1 Maryland Court, Newbury, New York.
Thank you. Next on the list is John Kleiman. Okay, no comment, no problem. John Enver. Okay. Connor Record.
Connor Record, the Orange County Partnership at 40 Crotty Street. I'm here tonight to speak in support of this Amazon project. It's a $200 million investment in an industrial area. It wasn't that big. We're going to extend the infrastructure down the corridor, we're just going to activate-
You gotta talk, you're gonna have to pause this way or it's too loud for them to hear.
You're not hearing me, that's the problem.
Oh, you can't hear me?
Yeah, when you turn your back to me, I can't hear you.
Okay, got it. I'll start from top, cause we both, we both- So we're talking 150 jobs, but an important aspect of this is every one of those people, they're going to have an opportunity to go to school for free, an associate's degree, a bachelor's degree, important upward mobility opportunities for people who work. I had a college roommate who worked at Amazon Montgomery, a actuary. He isn't actuary now, he worked there for a year while he studied for his exams. It's an important educational tool, and this is an example of a company that's investing in the community. I worked in Montgomery. During COVID, they provided grants for small businesses. They were a partner at the table. And again, they're extending infrastructure. That's going to allow us to track manufacturing, assembly in the Route 6 quarter. So Amazon is a key community partner in them. Also, remember that there's going to be local labor on this job. In fact, a minimum of 85%. Talking to our neighbors, our colleagues, are going to have an opportunity to work on a almost million square feet industrial project. And those labor jobs are important. Members of our community, these labor workers get lunch, Wayau'au'anda. They get lunch around the communities, get coffee, help small businesses. And let's also remember, there's no pilot involved in this. The IDA is not granting a pilot. There's going to be millions of dollars, tax revenue to the community, school district, and that's going to help budget, it's going to help the overall tax burden. So again, jobs, significant investment, infrastructure, education, and new tax revenue. And after the Board of Directors of the Orange County Partnership, we support this project and thank you.
You did remind me of something I left out of the initial remarks that I should have added, is about the Orange County IDA's local labor policy. I think it was passed in 2016 originally, and we stood by, we actually strengthened it over the years. But it requires that any applicant who receives a benefit, any sort of incentive, even if it's just one of the few that I mentioned, if they do, they have to adhere to our local labor policy. That requires that 85% of the construction workers on a project like this have to be from the local region. So I, thank you for mentioning that. Next up is, I apologize, I'm not picking on anyone's handwriting, I just apparently am not going to, I'm not even sure how to start with this one. Nicholas, the, what's your name, sir?
DeRosa, Nicholas DeRosa.
That's exactly what it says, I just couldn't pick it out. Could you please state your name one more time and your address in your comments?
Nicholas DeRosa, I live on Route 6. First, I want to say that I don't have a horse in a race as far as whether they should build this or not on McBride Road. They don't be running a business up there to begin with, so I'm not really concerned about that. My concern is giving Amazon a tax break, I could say. I looked up Amazon this morning online, they're worth 438 billion, that's what it'd be, $118 million. And Jeff Bezos, who I'm sure still has a hand in things, his worth is $116 billion. If they can't do it with that, then shame on them, go elsewhere, go someplace else. I'm really opposed to giving them any, and I, you know, you made it very interesting when you mentioned 43 times the value. That certainly got my attention. But you know what? They'll come here and they'll do it with or without that. I'm just opposed to giving them any type of tax extension, especially, I think you should save the money for mom and pop operations. People will really need it, not these multi-billionaires. I'm just offended by it. I think they have a lot of the passion to even present it, but there again too, nothing ventured, nothing gained. I hope you consider that, the source of this, the wealth that these people have, and are looking for even more. Thank you.
Thank you. Vanessa, next, you want to sign this?
Your full name and your address, please. Uh, yeah, Vanessa Good. I live at Seven Linden Avenue in, it's C I D. Um, I live at Seven Linden Avenue in Middleton. Um, good afternoon. As you all heard, I am a resident of Orange County, and it's so disappointing to have to be here today. I'm psyched, but just hearing this incentive that's being proposed, I don't think this should be happening. The gentleman right here just made a really great point. We should be focusing on having this money or any other funds allocated to anything for the community and bring, no matter what, Amazon's already coming here. It's already gonna pollute our communities. Do we not have enough pollution already here? I don't think that Amazon and, and all properties should get this incentive. I'm actually asking you all today, please take that into consideration because they just continue to, again, as I mentioned, increase pollution, endanger workers in high injury jobs, and also pay very low. I know this firsthand because I have friends and family that work at these warehouses. Great that the other gentleman was able to benefit, there are many others that I currently know that do not, and they're picking up overtime, practically killing themselves, trying to make ends meet. My, my ask is, please, Amazon made five hundred and thirteen point nine hundred and eighty-three billion in revenue back in twenty twenty-two. Amazon made five hundred and thirteen point nine hundred and eighty-three billion in revenue in twenty twenty-two, and they should not be giving tax breaks at the expense of our community. So I'm asking you, I'm pleading, please deny the request for financial assistance from Amazon and Skanel Properties. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicholas. Next is Joyce Bressler. Joyce, please state your full name and your address, please.
Yes, Joyce Bressler, Eighteenth Street Hill Road, New York. And I really endorse what, I'm opposed to this, a lot because of the tax incentives. I really agree with Nicholas about the fact that this is a, they're billionaires and they can afford to, you know, not take this money. I think that the tax incentives should go inside the community. I was, with all due respect, I, I know you put a lot of effort into your assessments about what the benefit would be to the community, and I read recently in the paper that Amazon is actually walking away from a lot of these places around the country. I think they're closing or walking away from forty-two warehouses that they propose. And I don't know, you know, if they're actually gonna go through with this and what's gonna happen to the community if it becomes one of those disasters. And I understand the incentive for the construction jobs and that it would be local people, but I didn't hear if you said that they would be union jobs. And also, the, the, the record of the company as Amazon is not very good in terms of supporting union workers and that there should be union workers. They should, they're union busting companies. And I, I also, maybe there's some people who get a benefit from being, getting, getting an education, but the majority of the people that work in these warehouses are supporting families, and they need better working conditions and better, better, you know, better wages. So, I support that and don't support the financial system.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is Leanna, Leanna? Okay, sure. And if anyone changes their mind and wants to speak at the end, just flag me, please, okay? Dino Ungaya? Sorry, I didn't pronounce that properly.
Yeah, no problem. I have a public comment from a friend who also lives in Newburgh and an uncle of my own.
Where do you live, sir, if you could tell?
Yes.
Where do you live?
I live in thirty-two Calvin Lane, Newburgh. This is from Mark Sanchez Potter, who lives on four fourteen Newburgh. The Orange County IDA, I am Mark Sanchez Potter, public school teacher in Newburgh, New York. I'm here to state my opposition to Amazon specifically, Skanel Properties receiving close to eight million dollars in tax incentives. Large corporations are more than capable operating and paying sales and mortgage recording taxes. Orange County is becoming a seat of warehouses owned by large, multi-billion dollar corporations. Towne Weewyanda and Orange County should instead develop affordable housing and seek to preserve forests, respectively yours, Mark Sanchez Potter, Newburgh, New York.
Do you have your own comments, sir?
Yes.
Okay. Can we take that, his letter or the amount, or?
Go ahead.
I'm gonna insert it for the record with four.
So for me, so to the staff and the board members here, you know, Michael, Dean, Dr. Odick, Mark Giovanni, James, Susan, Bill, and Kelly. Now, I'm just reading through the IDA website. You all seem like upstanding and cautious members of the Orange County community. And so from what I saw in the biography, you know, Dean's a union man. Dr. Odick is an educator and academic. James, a grandfather human rights advocate. Bill, you're a staunch supporter of your community through what I've seen. You all show, you all show that you care about the community, right? From what everyone's talking about, there are a lot of problems with Amazon coming into the community. That's not just it, though, it's giving Amazon and Skanel these financial incentives. Amazon has shown they're going to invest in Orange County. They have a warehouse already in Montgomery. They're gonna be here. They spent months of getting the final conditional approval from the town of Weewyanda. So they're coming here no matter what. Why do we need to give them tax incentives, like Nicholas said, where we can be giving it to small, you know, businesses, other people trying to provide good jobs for the community? On top of that as well, just some facts about, you know, working at Amazon. I know someone at Amazon, and the conditions, the work conditions, the injury rates are horrendous. Double the amount for other warehouse jobs. I know someone who basically, they got a deep, deep hand cut when they were working at Amazon. They passed out on the floor. There was no medical professionals around them who took care of them. When they woke up after whatever unspecified amount of time, they went to Amazon Medical Team. They asked them, hey, like, I need some help, can I get some time off, an injury time off or anything? They basically said, you have to continue working or you can take your own time off. Amazon doesn't provide good benefits for their workers. They don't have injury time off, how other good union jobs have. Really, I'm asking you, consider, do not give Amazon these tax incentives. This money can go somewhere else.
Uh, next is Carla Johnson Brody.
Oh, hello, hello.
Hello. Your name and address, please.
Um, Carla Johnson Brody, Newburgh, city of Newburgh. So, the reason why I don't think they should get this, this tax is because it's already a billion-dollar company. So are they getting a billion, how they making their money is that they coming into town asking for all these tax breaks and then they're getting ritual for the poor. So I don't think that we should allow this because they, they already have so much funds available while they can't pay taxes, while we can't bring it to other small businesses. That young lady right there would like to start a business, this young teenager from N F A would like to start a business. I would like to start a business. Can we get a tax cut? No, so why should they? And some of us pay taxes in the city of Newburgh, and it's just not right because this company, I have a cousin who actually works for Amazon, and every station is supposed to have first aid kits at every intersection. Most of the first aid kits don't have Band-Aids, they don't have T N sanitizer, they're working them like slaves for all of these hours, and the work conditions are really terrible. So, and then they don't get no time off if they get hurt, if they get COVID, they gotta go out and they're not gonna work. So the point is, is that why are we gonna give them this tax credit, this credit, and they don't need it? So I don't think you should allow them to get it, make them pay taxes like that.
The Tiana, is that possible? No, okay, you just signed it, understood. Kalvin Shakur? Kalvin Amari Shakur? Sir, if you'd state your full name and your, their address.
Amari Shakur, city of Newburgh, sixty-five fifty. So, this, these are some of the people that I represent from the city of Newburgh. So I came here because one of the things was the tax incentive. That's Newburgh money, that's our county money. So where are the benefits for the city of Newburgh for us? The young man that he was talking about, the fellow on the floor, that was my grandson. That was my grandson he was talking about. The conditions that they're working in is like you said, slave labor, economic slavery now. That's what we call economic slavery. But, how do these benefits represent or how do they benefit the city of Newburgh? We need tax incentives. We need, like I said, we're facing critical conditions in our, in our communities and houses and jobs. And this is our money that is being given to billionaires for incentives when they're already here. So if they're already here, what is the incentive? The incentive is to bring somebody here. They're already here, so what about the people that live here already? Where's our incentive? For the city of Newburgh, as a representative, I'd like to know how would this benefit us? How would these tax incentives work for our city? Because we don't have jobs in our city, we don't have housing stocks in our city that need to be restructured and refixed. But, these people are already here, they're billionaires, and we'd like to know how would this benefit my city for us? Right now, whereas like I said, in the midst of coming out with pandemic and people are struggling, community residents are struggling, where is their incentive for them? Thank you.
All right, next is Robert, I can't totally read this, is it Pinto?
Yeah.
Okay. Your name is, sir?
Sorry, Rob Pinto, one fifty-seven Van Wagen Road, Poughkeepsie. I represent workers that live and work in Orange County.
Robert?
Robert Pinto, one fifty-seven Van Wagen Road, Poughkeepsie. I represent workers that live and work in Orange County. When we invite an employer into our community, we should be inviting employers who are assets to the community, not employers that intend to bleed the community dry. This community is not a natural, this community is not a natural resource to be plundered for corporate profits at the expense of the good people that live here. We have seen corporations destroy the air, the land, and the water in this area. We demand environmental responsibility from any corporation that we invite to our community. No employer should be brought here that requires their employees to have wages subsidized by government services just to simply survive. Amazon will be using the infrastructure that our tax dollars pay for here, yet they feel no need to maintain and they feel no need to contribute. We should not be giving a tax break to a company that will not be paying a fair living wage, Hudson Valley's fair living wage, and that does not prioritize worker safety over profits.
Next is Jonathan Cieslak.
There. Jonathan, I don't know if you can see it, C I E S L A K, that's my last name, and then five Winchester Way in Washingtonville, Orange County. Yeah, I'm just gonna echo a lot of the other sentiments that people have brought up here. Amazon is an extremely wealthy company already, does not need tax breaks to come here. All the rest of us, everybody who works pays taxes, and we don't get access to these same sort of financial instruments and teams of people looking for loopholes and trying to extract as much value as they can for the community. And we should just not be spending this money on them, figure out something else to do with it. But yeah, Amazon, if they're gonna come here, let them pay for it and set it up and everything, do not, you know, give them this money.
Is there anyone else that didn't sign up? Please. Do you need to sign up for the group?
Start, start again. Roland Brownie, and I'm from the city. And just have something for you to say. I feel like Amazon, when you go on their site, they have cheaper prices than Walmart, ShopRite, everybody else. And then, they're gonna take over to the point where they're gonna suck everyone in and then change their prices and make all the other businesses go out of business, that's one. Then we'll be forced to pay, pay their high prices, and they're already billionaires. Two, it's kinda unfair that they're getting, they're getting a tax break, or could. When I have a small business, I haven't made any money off this business yet, and I have to pay taxes. How is it that they're billionaires and they don't get to pay taxes and I don't make a dollar, I gotta pay taxes? That's not fair at all. And the last thing is, I've seen online that Amazon is replacing workers in other states like Texas with robots. So eventually, ten years, five years from now, they're gonna replace their workers with robots, so how is that benefiting anyone?
Uh, would anyone else like to speak? That, Mr. DeRosa?
May I?
You can, absolutely. Come back up to the front if you would, please, to the public area.
It's important that pay our money mom and pop operations, fill in the air conglomerates that don't need it. Very important that you do that. Definitely, I want to share with the group what I saw this morning. Wages were brought up here by someone, I'm not quite sure. I went to Dunkin' Donuts this morning, ate a coffee, and in the window, it was a sign that you're now hiring seventeen dollars an hour. Then it was taught here of maybe making nineteen dollars an hour in a warehouse, very hard work. I don't know how they're gonna fill these hundred and fifty positions. I really don't, but that's not my concern. My concern is, save the money for those folks that really need it.
Can I have one more comment?
Okay, no, no, so, when you talk about the job creation, right, job creation is a great thing. I'm a union laborer, I worked at Fears over four forty-five in New York for twenty-three years, I drove a truck. I know about hard work, not opposed to hard work. People gotta get paid the right to hard work, right? But the problem is here is this, right? From Newburgh to Montgomery, you build twenty large warehouses in, who knows how many the last year, right? And you know what it becomes? Because of typical jobs, because of punishing jobs, right? For lack of a better word, I'm gonna say here, you might not, but these companies are tense, right? You look at, you look at somebody like me who's Hispanic, grew up in an urban area, and it's like, oh, this guy's a tough. But the real tough is corporate America, they're the white collar criminals, right? And that's the exception. What jobs are you creating, right? Right? What jobs are you creating? You're creating jobs that are only attracted to the poor. You know why I know that? Because you just laid off eighteen thousand people. Those, those were eighteen thousand poor people. So where's the economic development for them? I, you know, I've just proposed that a hundred percent.
Come back up, bro.
I got an idea. If we say, come to the table, ask them, what if we don't give you this tax break or is there gonna come? And if we do give you this, are you gonna raise that nineteen dollars, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five dollars an hour? Ask them, because if they say they don't want it without the tax credit, then you know they're not for.
Any other comments? Go ahead.
One last thing for me. So in two thousand and eighteen, there was this famous race for Amazon to build a new headquarters. Every, I think lots of people remember, a lot of, H O Q, a lot of famous things were going on, lots of cities were giving all types of sort of tax breaks. But Amazon already had it in mind that they wanted to build it in New York. So they wasted lots and lots of companies that are city times and all that sort of stuff, facing these tax breaks. And they ended up getting what they wanted, which was a big tax break in New York City. So here's, you know, a report from the Tax Foundation, just a few paragraphs from two thousand and eighteen from Tax Foundation. Firming previous reports, Amazon has announced New York City and Arlington, Virginia as location for its new headquarters operation. This announcement, the company also disclosed the state and local tax incentives offered by its two jurisdictions, showing the company would receive up to seven, seven hundred and seventy-three billion dollars from Virginia, nearly three billion. seventy-three billion dollars from Virginia, nearly three billion dollars from New York in tax state. States and localities give away billions of dollars annually in tax incentives. The Amazon situation is nothing new, but they're in extremely inefficient ways to provide tax relief or growth in economies when incentivized firms relocate, pump in businesses, and individuals end up footing the bill for the increased demand.
Tom, one more comment, sure.
Colin, I got to ask you a comment, just so we can, the public can hear you as well, please. Do you want to turn sideways, face the screen, but pass the audience? Yeah, great. Sure. Yeah, no, no. Great point. I just, I just want to, again, want to hit on the value of keeping the construction jobs. There are projects that have gone through, sure, not use IDA abatement in any way, and they will pull their labor from others. This project, if you're getting a sales tax abatement, will be utilizing local construction labor. Many of them, by virtue, because they need so much labor, will be union workers. And also to the value of incentives, New York State, ultimately Yang, and force Amazon to go to New York. So incentives are important, and this is tremendous economic development investments. Again, an opportunity for people in my age bracket to work, go to school for free, think about the next, what they want to do for the next. And it's great discourse, and I just wanted to come up and then say that again, that the labor is important. Thank you.
Thanks, Colin. Last call. Any, I don't want to get a back and forth based upon someone else's comment, as I said at the beginning, but Mr. Shakur, please, one more comment.
My sister, she went through college by working at the toll station on Newburgh Bridge, or the tolls ago. One of my kids, they worked at Walmart, had a job. I go to Walmart, it's always like one cashier and go checkout counter. Jobs are being phased out with these tax incentives. Are they going to guarantee that they will keep jobs and hire more people? Or will they do the same thing once they get these tax incentives, get this, where they start phasing out jobs? And we have to understand that when you phase out jobs, you're phasing out money that's going to come back to your company. People are going to spend this money with you anyway, but we need to get back. So the real incentive should be to the community. Of course, it's going to go back to them anyway. So the real incentive should be to Orange County residents instead of Orange County millionaire or billionaires that are long in the, I guess.
I think that's the end of the comments. So again, I'm not looking to respond directly, but I'm going to respond a few of these just for, you know, education purposes. First of all, I will tell you this, I'm not speaking for the applicants, but with what I know about the project, I believe the number of permanent jobs that they put in their application, a hundred and fifty, is low. I think you're going to see many more realized than that. I think they're being conservative. So I think, and I encourage you to watch this project as it goes, I think you're going to see those numbers increase. As a side note, you're talking about automation and things like that. As you're seeing, this is something that we're facing as economic developers, where we're trying to bring all kinds of jobs here and keep those job levels high. It's out of necessity. You're finding that a lot of these employers can't find the talent. So what's that expression? Necessity is the mother of invention. That's what's leading to the development with automation and seeing more of that. They can't find enough workers. So we're trying to look ahead to see that that trend is happening, that they can't find enough workers, so they're bringing in more automation, more robotic. They don't have to worry about labor issues. So we want to be ahead of it. And frankly, we are trying, people like Connor and his group and myself and the IDA, we're trying to look ahead to bring, even beyond these projects, bringing high-tech jobs, advanced manufacturing, those jobs that take advantage of where technology is going. But technology is a threat to these types of jobs and many others that we have. I don't deny that, and that's what we want to, we want to, you know, guard against it. Again, be looking to the future to back up, you know, come in the back with other jobs that are going to continue to be viable for years to come. So I do want to address that. A couple of other things, ready to order based upon some of the comments. They're talking, a few people talked about wages, not just for this project, but others in the area that are growing, without question. Wages locally have grown tremendously, but they're being outpaced by the cost of living. No question about it. It's absolutely concerning. This IDA has never considered incentives for housing. That's something that this board of directors is considering now. It's a way to hit both issues. Bring in jobs, and again, we're aiming for better and better jobs, but also to help lower, actually alleviate the housing prices, provide more housing opportunities so that, yes, people can live here and they can afford to work here. I'm as upset with, as you, with the idea that anyone can work here and that may not be able to afford to live here. It's wrong. We need to change that. I just want you to know this IDA is focused on that end of the issue. Let's see. Amazon's wealth and Jeff Bezos's wealth, I've heard this many times, not just about this project in the past. My, my only statement to that is, they're, he's wealthy, they're a, a successful company, but that's mostly because they make good business decisions. And we're concerned about our needs here. No, really, they're, it's not, it's, they are, they're trying to, they want to do it most. I'm, I'm just giving you, I'm giving the audience the perspective.
Your job as the IDA is that you want to give a tax incentive, which are all opposed, most of us here, right? And then you sit in here, you're pacifying what's good about them. We're not here to pacify what's good about them. We want them not to come here. You're making everything debatable. If you want to debate, at the town hall meeting, you can debate outside all day long.
Let's do that. You know, I won't do it in there. That's fine. I was trying to get to the other side of it, so you hear exactly what the idea is.
We've done our research. We all have.
Understood. I won't, I won't respond anymore. That's, that's fine. Any other comments at all from anyone? So it's four oh two, it's four oh two on March third, we're going to close this public hearing. I want to sincerely thank all of you for being involved and coming out and taking time out of your day to speak here. Thanks so much. Happy to speak at the end of this as well, if anyone wants us to speak on the spot. Thanks so much. Thanks for coming, folks.